Phones on mute. Official, I would like to open the Thursday, twenty twenty three, um, Bethlehem Planning Board, uh, public meeting. The first item of business is, um, two oh six Mechanic Street. Uh, John Cusick, is that, are you here?
I'm here.
Anyone else from your company here to see them?
Nope, just me.
Okay, can you give us an overview?
Absolutely. Yep, should be very, very simple and I'll be very, very brief. Uh, for the record, John Cusick with Bowler Engineering. Uh, we had, uh, the, went through the approval process for two oh six, uh, Mechanic Street for the, the warehouse project there. Uh, as that project is ramping up and getting ready to start construction, uh, the contractors are brought on board, the full design team for the building and, and whatnot's on board. So we went through and prepared our construction documents to support same. Uh, and as part of that, there is a couple of, uh, very, very minor changes. That, uh, we think are, um, extremely minor, but just to follow the proper process and protocol, we wanted to bring for the board.
I appreciate that.
Yep, absolutely. I can share my screen real, real quick and show you what we're talking about, but it was just a few, uh, few things here, so. Let's see. Did that show up?
Yes, it did.
Okay, so long story short, this is the construction drawings that we have, uh, the changes that have been made. Are, uh, number one, the accessible parking stalls were approved in this location here. Uh, they have been moved to this location. And the reason for that is when we came before you, before the full architecturals were done, we just assumed that the office would actually be in this portion of the building. It's actually going to be in that portion, so it just makes sense to have that. You can kind of see the outline in light, in light gray. Um, the facade of the building is not changing at all. It was very important to the board, as you likely recall, to have multiple, um, kind of glass portions of the building. So it all looked like a front, but that will actually be where the office is located. So we moved the accessible parking stalls. Um, we've gone through and we've had our DOT permitting, um, so the traffic consultant did that. We just made sure that we just showed that level of detail on the drawings, just to match their, their, their driveway, uh, criteria as we went through the process with them. And I don't think anything really changed, but we just did incorporate that. And the building actually dropped by about one foot in elevation, so it's actually one foot lower now than was, uh, proposed. Uh, purpose of which to do that as we committed to, we committed to balancing the site as part of the process. Um, once we looked further and did more test pits and looked more how they were going to be reusing the soil on site and how thick pavement sections were, so on and so forth. Uh, the building will actually be lowered by about one foot. Which is actually, I think, a good thing because again, as part of the presentation. Um, the concern was just the, the, um, the appearance of the building from the, from the intersection. So, you know, we had, uh, presented that it was already going to be about five feet, uh, below the, the intersection to help, um, with that, uh, visual impact. This actually makes it a foot lower than what was presented at the, at the hearings.
Okay.
And then finally, uh, based on, this is the, this is the mechanical room, right, uh, right over here. Uh, based on that, our utilities will now be coming out this side of the building, whereas previously we had them coming out the front, uh, towards Mechanic Street. They're now going to go towards Maple. That's actually consistent with one of the comments that we got from DPW, uh, early on in the process, where they actually wanted us to connect the water line to Maple, uh, rather than mechanic. So that level of detail is now on the plans and that's really it.
Oh. Any questions?
I just have two quick questions, just out of curiosity. When do you think construction will start?
I, I think it's imminent. Um, I think the closing is scheduled for, um, for next week, from, from what I've heard. So I know the, um, the current property owner has been in the process of clearing out the, um, clearing out the building. Um, so that needed to, uh, needed to happen. I think that he's done there. So I think the closing is going to happen next week. I believe the permits are all in hand from the building department, if I'm not mistaken, so it should be starting up, um, within the next couple of, couple of weeks. Um, it'll be a little slow to start with demolition, obviously, and go through that process and do some pole relocations before you start seeing the, um, more significant work out there, but, but it's imminent.
Just my other question is, is sometimes we, we have a nice new paved road and then we, and for whatever reason, um. Uh, work is done, that comes along after the fact and then the nice big road is cut up. Is the, the tying into the Maple Street? Utilities, will that be done after the widening of the road or will that be done?
No, I think the intent would be to do all that before, before you're widening the road.
Okay. Yeah, alright, just curious.
Yep.
Um, one question, um. We went through the permitting process, we were talking about you going in front of the DOT about. Having enough room in the front for bike path. Did that come up with DOT? Remember how we had the situation where this, it's a state road, so, you know, you guys were working on with the state that I think you wrote into the decision that you were going to. Le- leave enough room in the front of the driveway there and the curbs to, to. Have a bike path, even though the bike path wouldn't extend further, but if we were ever going to put a bike path there. That was going to be enough room in the front. Did that end up having those conversations happen?
No, the conversations happened. Um, I was not involved directly with DOT as it was a traffic engineer who, who typically goes to that process, but they were well aware of the, the condition and coordinated everything with, with DOT. Um, I can't speak to the specifics of, of where it was, where things landed there and, and what DOT may have, um, may have said or, or didn't say relative to that. Um, but, but they had all of the information towards moving forward with that, uh, portion of the, of the design.
Yeah, I didn't see it on these current drawings that you're submitting. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I, from, these drawings don't really depict anything in the, in the, in the, in the road there, so I don't, I don't know specifically what's happening there. And we have a sidewalk at the edge here. Um, I can get the approved DOT plans over to, um, over to staff that would have more, more of the detail, those would have been prepared by Van Ass. Uh, and associates, I can absolutely get that provided over to, uh, to everybody.
Okay, we, we talked earlier that it would have been night, you know. The goal is to make that accessible in the future. If there was other development down the street, you know, if, if we're working on. Working on the driveways and we're working on the road and you gotta go in front of DOT, then that would be the time to be able to build that into the plan. So yeah, I'd be interested to see what happened on that.
Yeah, I could, I can definitely provide, um, get those plans from Van Ass and, and provide, uh, provide it over to Jim and Amy.
Now, so you can give us an update on the discussion for DOT.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
I, I have, um. Looking at it, um, at least one question. When we first went through this design. We thought the offices would be in the front and the front of the building would look like office. We're going to have a lot of glass there?
Yep.
Is that still going to be there?
Yes, un- un- unequivocally, that was very, and, and those, um, those elevations were part of the approval. And you, I think you actually referenced those exhibits, so you're.
Yep.
They are there. So a- again, I think they're created, i- if you recall, I don't have those with me, I apologize, but we had the, the front was a bunch of glass. And then we added some midway and then some at the end, so that still remains, but the actual office is here, even though from the outside it will look, look like there's multiple offices.
That's fine.
Yep.
Any other questions? From my viewpoint. Not only my viewpoint, I think the conditions we discussed so far are minor in nature. Does anyone?
I agree.
So I'd like to entertain, I would entertain a motion, uh, for, uh, to consider there's some minor change. Have a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, seconded, to consider these changes for two oh six Mechanic Street, minor in nature. Uh, again, it's been made in seconded, um, any discussion? I would like to call innovation for the vote. That's. The little cloud that's behind, built behind I. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Great.
You made that quite very simple.
Great. Thank you all for your time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is ten to twenty Payne Street, uh, an approval not required plan. Want to applaud yours? Want to introduce yourself?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman Jim. My name's, uh, Bob Nealon, and I'm here representing, uh, Ben Foz. And with me is Mr. Derek Scott.
Okay.
The two owners of, uh, ten and twenty.
Uh, Jim, can you give us an overview on this?
Sure, um, I'd be happy to. Jim Cooper, planner, uh, just reviewing the plan before you, actually, if I can, I'll share my screen for anybody who is. Uh, looking, Pam, if you don't mind. Uh, but what we have here are two lots, um, just give me a minute, uh, two lots on Payne Street, uh, the, the, the. Concern here from the last time that this was presented are both lots are undersized, uh, lots, lot one. Um, as it's reflected on the plan is ten thousand five hundred fifty-five square feet and lot two is four thousand five hundred thirty-nine square feet. Uh, the tr- the trading of the land reduces, uh, the non-conforming lot one, uh, to eight thousand nine hundred and five square feet. And does increase the conformity slightly of lot two to six thousand one hundred and eighty-eight, uh, square feet and some change. Uh, so you have two lots with, uh, the trading of, uh, some land to the rear of, of each of these lots. Obviously, the concern of the board at the last meeting was not necessarily the access in the frontage, um, but that the, the non-conforming lot is furthering the non-conformity and therefore. Uh, would be in violation of zoning if this was to be recorded, uh, and I believe this board stressed that at the last, last time this, this came through.
Mr. Chairman, I, this plan was submitted as, uh, uh, an ANR plan under chapter forty-one.
Yep.
E O P. In my understanding of that plan, what, uh, uh, that statute is, what a planning board has to decide when reviewing this. Uh, is this a subdivision? That's occurring, and I would submit to you, this is not a subdivision, they're not creating new lots, they're not creating a way. They're simply, uh, subdividing some parcels of land. And, uh. If you look at the statute in the case law. It's simply determination by the board that this is not a subdivision and therefore. The plan can be signed by the planning board. If you look at the plan above, on the right-hand side, above the signing, uh, below the signing block, I'm sorry. You will see there's a reference that this board is making no determination with respect to zoning. Uh, whether or not it complies to zoning. Um, it's, um, noted on the, on the plan, the top left-hand side, what the intent is in terms of. Combining lot, uh, lot one with parcel A and, uh, lot two with parcel B. And the, the determination shouldn't be made on whether or not there's an impact in zoning and, and. I would submit to that, however. The, um. The judgment that you folks have to make isn't a subdivision plan, and I would submit to you that it is not a subdivision plan.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I completely agree with, uh, what, uh, um, the attorney has mentioned in terms of whether or not the. Uh, A and R, um, um, meets the standards. Um, I think this board and this town has committed to the residents and the applicants to identify, uh, concerns that may be established. And work with them to try and make it through a proper process, because the moment this is recorded, it has become a, a further non-conformity and therefore zoning violation. Um, so I, you know, in terms of residents of our community, I was, you know, we stress the fact that. We don't want to see them in violation and we don't want to see, you know, enforcement action occur. Um, so the prob- we, we recommend the proper steps be pursued. And historically speaking, this board has always offered the opportunity for the applicants to do it. Uh, in the correct pattern of seeking relief for the, the non-conform, the furthering of the non-conformity. And then coming in for the A and R, but, you know, it's, it's that the discretion of the applicant, obviously, to, uh, to pursue the proper per- path to permitting.
Anything else, sir? Do you have the other standard?
No, Mr. Chairman.
What?
Um. No, I. I guess I, I'm interested to know if Jim, well, I think I hear what Jim recommends, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Jim. He follows, knows.
Jimmy, are you referring that he should go to zoning first?
Historically speaking, that's what we've always, we've always recommended for our residents, uh, you know, you're furthering a non-conformity, go to zoning board of appeals, seek your relief. Um, and if received, then, uh, you know, produce the A and R for, for this board's endorsement and get it recorded and you. You know, you have a, a viable, uh, lot that is conforming to the town of, the town zoning or by law.
Thank you.
I was just curious, what, if, what's the intended purpose of? Changes that you're making?
The intended purpose is to, um, I'm sure you noticed that on, uh, number twenty, it's quite a small lot. Mr. Scott, whose, uh, graciousness was trying to give this a pause somewhat in backyard and some privacy. Uh, a few folks are familiar with the area, there's some business at thirty and, uh, again, just trying to give some, uh. The, who's, uh, increased area, sort of, have a backyard.
Has there been any, uh, I, I, is it beyond what we're, yeah, I understand what the scope of our decision is, but has there been consideration of. Trying to alleviate the non-conformity so that. One year from now, five years from now, whatever it is that, uh, they don't have problems going forward?
Well, my understanding of, um. Chapter. Uh, forty-eight, section six. Uh, as long as you have fifty feet of frontage and five thousand square feet. Um, you can have a, a, a building that's, uh, that's the, nothing to do with zoning, provided that it's a lot. Owned in a separate ownership, which this has, it has, uh, prior to zoning. So I, I believe there's protection for this lot. Given the size.
And however, you're now, you, you've, if, if that is the case, you've received that protection and now you're reducing the lot. That is, the requirement is, uh, I believe forty thousand square feet in this area. I, I don't have that in front of me, I apologize, but it's, it's certainly greater than, uh, the ten thousand square feet.
Uh, uh, you know, it's, do you have enough frontage? So that's, that's the scope of our discussion, but as long as everyone's eyes wide open about what's happening here. Then that's, that's the, oh, nice decision to make.
Won't speak for them, but my involvement with the discussion at length is what. By reducing the size of Mr. Scott's. Uh, lot, uh, lot, uh. Clearly, there, there could be zoning implications, but you don't know until someone has to go for relief from the zoning board. They're going to do something on that, on that lot. If they're not going to do anything on that lot, it remains. As it is.
Right.
Yep.
That's fine.
And I think that's why there's that. Language on the plan, uh, that the board is not making any. Uh, you know, reference to compliance with zoning and that's. That's the position. Thank you.
No, but I do recognize the precedences that we have done by, you know. Some of the projects that we've had, we've sent to the zoning board first before they come back here. Not sure if it was the, I think it's right, or the one we just did on their plan, they sent to the zoning board first. Before we even sighed. Um, I guess I have no questions.
I'm in agreement with Jim and the board on the order of events.
Okay. I, I'm leading towards advice from our, um, insult reporter town planner. Uh, my concern is we're, um. Making things now more non-conforming. So what I, I would like to see done, and I want to have a discussion here, is what is the downside of, uh, seeking a variance, uh, from the zoning? And then coming back for a day, okay.
May I speak?
Certainly, so why you want to come up, feel free.
I'm Derek Scott, I own the property in Payne Street.
Yes, sir.
And my lot goes behind his house, so. And, um. I'm in an unfortunate circumstance, we've been working this for two years, I thought I'd be doing him a favor before I sold my house.
Yep.
Uh, I am selling my house imminently.
Okay.
A truck just went through my bathroom, I wiped out the house. I mean, I need to sell it so some contractor can fix it up.
Okay.
And I, I'm wanting to leave soon. Uh, and so in my, I know this is not a concern for you, but from my perspective, there's some urgency in this, or, or it doesn't happen. And I really think it'd be very difficult for a new owner to be willing to part with the property. I, I think his lot is very hard to sell without a backyard. I mean, there's no yard around the base gate at all, hardly any place to park. And I think he's in a very difficult situation. My backyard is behind his house, it's very awkward because he's looking at me, my backyard, my dog. So I mean, I think it, and there's no, some. Some total non-conformity is the same, same to a lot, you're just reassigning it. So I mean, there's nothing else I can be done to make either lot bigger than this. Uh, and I want to point out one other thing, I hope it's not a complication, but it would need to get settled. I went through the zoning board, uh, set eight years ago to put an eight-foot fence behind my property line. Where the company business is on three Payne Street, and that was approved and it, it's there now. And as you can see from those two lot exchanges, my property line would be moved up against thirty, probably thirty Payne Street. Whereas now, there's a small strip of land, a wood, some string dreezing that belongs to twenty Payne Street between ten and thirty. Yeah, so I, I don't know, I would assume if this transfer were to take place, we could move that eight-foot fence, which I already have zoning board approval, it's already recorded and registered. So I don't know if that's a separate issue, but it would need to be approved or none of this makes sense because it's a fence. Two property lines. No, it, it is my preference, they're not supposed to be going in the industry, allow us to proceed, but that's from total no, not, no knowledge of how this process is supposed to be. And I apologize for that, so.
That's fine.
I have a large question.
Yes.
Is, are you on septic?
Yes, both.
I know these are kind of limited spaces, is any of this land swamps, are they going to affect any of that?
No, they both go right up to the street down the driveway, so septic is not in the backyards.
And the septic systems are in the front yard?
Yeah, a- a- and as well as the water, it all goes on the Payne Street.
Oh, so, so you're on sewer, not.
That's right, so, yeah.
Okay.
That alleviates your concern.
Yeah, no, I'm just, just. Yeah, okay. Okay.
Jim, what, what, what is your, um, opinion? Of, um, I know this has been around for a while. And I know we, we, we like to stay away from, um. Quote-unquote. Broadening a non-conforming lot, we try to avoid that at all costs. I think we have three options. Um, asked to go to the zoning board, approve it, but Jim, what happens if we don't take any action?
If, if no action's taken, um, I, the A and R is constructively approved after twenty-one days from being stamped in with the town clerk's office, so. Uh, some action should be taken today, uh, would be my recommendation. Um, you can cert- so alternatively, if it's not, um, you know, another option may be to. Uh, endorse and have the applicant work with the building commissioner to, um, you know, seek further relief. I, I still strongly, you know, advise the, the residents to at least look into it further, um, you know, that, this is, this comes up quite often with, uh. You know, non-conformities and not having the proper relief in hand, um, so I just, that's just my opinion.
Let me ask you a question. Let's say five years from now, you, you go to sell your property and we have a non-conforming lot. What happens then, Jim? Do a bank who wants to loan the money, do they expire?
Well, it, it, it really does depend on, on the, the bank and, you know, the institution. We do get a number of calls about, you know, not having proper relief in hand. Um, and typically at that time, we need to work with the property owner to try and resolve that issue. I don't know if the applicant's attorney may have some other, um, suggestions.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm, I bought it non-conforming, he bought it non-conforming, I mean, there's nothing that can be done, right? I mean, it's not going to stop anything.
No, I'm concerned with selling down the road. Buying it, it's non-conforming, you've already got a loan.
It's going to be forever non-conforming.
I, I understand it.
Now, I think the issue, my understanding issue is if someone were to seek. Some additional zoning relief. That the argument from the zoning board could be, look, this was non-conforming, you made it non-conforming, we're, we're not, we're not going to hear you. But then, it, they're not going to lose the right to have a home. On that property.
I'm not, I'm not implying.
Oh, no, just that.
I'm just thinking they could have it, some banks could look at it differently, because it's a non-conforming lot.
Yeah, but pre-existing non-conformity zoning. And I think the.
Well, so that's, that's the problem, sir, is it's no longer pre-existing, you're, you've furthered that now. You, you've now created a non-conformity that's, that happened after zoning is in place and, and, and you're right, there. And so a lot of times it's, it's about the, honestly, the, a lot of times, the only time this comes up is when lenders, uh, come into play. Uh, and they, they ask for, you know, how has this got, gotten to this position is all.
May I ask another question?
Yeah, sure, a- absolutely.
What, what, what would the impact be if Ben were to buy my property? Does that offer any other options to him? Now there'd be two homes on, are still larger, non-conforming lot, right?
Does that change anything?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
If he was to sell his property to his neighbor?
So that, that's a whole other can of worms that I'm sure your, your attorney could, uh, discuss with you. That's, uh, that potentially runs into the merger doctrine, where you have two, um, non-conforming lots that are undersized. That are now commonly owned, uh, potentially would merge, uh, though you do have two structures on there, so that, that could save you for the time being. Uh, and I'm sure, uh, Tim Icardi, the building commissioner, could help you with that as well.
Jim?
Yeah, so, um.
Someone come up, sure, we can hear.
So, um, look, if you're gonna, uh.
So um, look, if you're gonna uh change the existing lines of ownership on a preexisting lot, you most certainly should go to ZBA. Just to, just to eliminate problems down the road.
Correct.
Okay, um, if he was to purchase this, the whole property, um, he'd have to do it in a different entity because it would merge.
Yeah.
So at that point, if um, if he wanted to purchase, if he was going to purchase the property and he was going to alter the lines, then he would go to ZBA too. I mean, it'd be the wise thing to do because then, you know, if you're going to market this lot later, um, you know, you're not going to run into someone saying, hey, wait a minute, this isn't, this isn't grandfather anymore. You changed the lines of ownership on a preexisting nonconforming lot. Whether or not you're making it more nonconforming, it doesn't matter, in my opinion. You know, you're just taking a chance. I mean, if 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 they're looking for a signature on this plan, um, and and the note is on there that it's you know, it's not, you're not, they're not implying anything by getting the signature, you know, I I I think by, they're creating more of a problem by changing the lines, you know, so. I think they should, it should really go to ZBA, you know, uh, not to create a problem for you down the road. If you're gonna, if you're gonna if you, I I understand what you're doing and that's good, but um, you may be creating a problem for yourself, you know?
I just, what's, what's the relief you ask for? When you go to, go to ZBA? You're not, you're not going with the plan to ask for.
You're, you're reducing your lot area, um, that's less than that of the lot area that is required. And uh, so it would be a variance for lot area. We actually this, this town has seen it quite a bit. Uh, there's a lot of nonconforming lots in in Bellingham over the years. We started with ten thousand square foot lots and are now some areas are two acre lots and uh, you know, so we have a lot of nonconformities and uh and uh, the, we tend to see a lot of uh relief sought uh because of that.
As soon as so uh there now, it's forty thousand square feet is required.
Yeah.
So, you know, as soon as someone goes to a bank and you see, you know, a new recording or a new deed, they're going to look at it and say, okay, what's going on here? You know, with a different um, with an updated preexisting nonconforming lot, they're gonna, you know, they're all looking at it now. You know, the banks all have these departments now. They're updating all the time. You know, what what's this and, you know, what happened here? Do you know? You know, that kind of thing. So, I mean, not to create a problem later on. I mean, it'd be wise to go to ZBA and just ask for that relief.
Can I ask another question? When is the next ZBA meeting?
It would be July six.
What?
Just see, I think it's July.
Ms, Mr. Chairman, if I may, the one solution, and again, this is, you know, the, I think you guys are doing a noble job to to try and help the the resident. You certainly could um endorse the plan. Um, and with the recommendation that the the applicant may want to consider not recording it right away and seeking uh relief uh from zoning. And if the relief is sought, then to record it. Ultimately, again, it's, it's, it's up to the applicant, but uh, it's just, you know, I I think it's the proper path forward, but uh, but again, it's ultimately up to the applicant.
Well, I can apply line here. We're trying to address above property owners in the short term, but also exclude something from happening long term. Can I ask you for a second clarity, Jim, uh to repeat that language so we can have it written down?
Yeah, and I could certainly work, uh, give it to Amy too, but uh that's the, you know, the the board could uh motion to endorse the plan as per, as submitted and and recommend that the applicant uh not record until such time as proper relief is sought and granted by the zoning board of appeals.
So, if I may, to the, to the board. I, I understand the, the two, the two applicants and the applicant are trying to work things out, but I, I think I'm against going, trying to endorse this plan and then having them wait until after the zoning board acts or doesn't act. And you know, I pushing, wish, you know, creating a more of a nonconformity is something I don't want to do. So I'm one member, but that's, I think where I'm going to sit.
All right, I'm.
So I, I don't disagree with, we really don't want to create nonconforming lot. We've educated, or we tried to tell them about the peril of doing that. But at the end of the day, the scope of our purview in this decision is really a function of mileage. And if we don't allow it, it will be eventually allowed because our decision will be based on the wrong um consideration.
Do part of my considerations, though, and I'll ask, I'll ask another board member. So the bylaws in general, I would say I wouldn't want to push a bad position. I mean, I'd be politically correct, but.
It's a state statute. It's, this is approval not required. Approvals are not required, but we just have to sign off on it. Our, the purview of our decision is simply, we have enough privilege, more or less, we just. So we can recommend and strongly suggest it's a great idea for them to do this. They're going to shoot themselves in the foot later on. But at the end of the day, we could, we could deny it, make ourselves feel better, but it's, it's just wasting time. It literally is just.
This document becomes legal in twenty days, no matter what.
If we don't do anything, it's, it's allowed.
Yeah.
And if we deny it for the wrong reasons, it's going to be allowed. We just slow down their lives. If they want to make a bad decision. Make a bad decision for good, for good reasons, for good reasons, but it's not long term. We, we're thinking long term. They're thinking less of, less of a long.
So we're, we're here to solve a short term problem and also a long term problems. Because we're, you know, making a nonconforming, quote unquote, more nonconforming. And that, that bothers.
It bothers me too, but at the end of the day, we are.
Very good.
Yes.
Yeah. I like Jim's recommendation. Well, recommendation.
Recommendation. For what it's worth.
Yeah.
Ask building inspector, your thoughts on the language being proposed?
Um, I think that, you know, if, if they're in here to seek, you know, um, signature on the plan, you know, it's it would really not, they, they really don't need it. Um, but they're here to do that and whatever it's going to cause them down the, you know, uh, the effect of it, they're going to have to deal with it. You know, um, if that's what they want to do, if that's, if they want to divide the lot, then that's their prerogative to do it. Just go ahead and I agree with you.
On the language proposed by Jim, what's your feeling on that? Is that something you can live with?
Well, I guess I'd need a little bit more understanding of what would be required from the property owners with what they had, we was owning, is that if is it something that, that Mr. Scott is under a time?
I mean, from my understanding, it would seem like they should go to the zoning board and get their approval for the new nonconforming laws. And now they'd be defined as two different preexisting nonconforming laws. I mean, I I assume there's no fixing a nonconforming nature.
I don't think there is.
Satisfactorily, no matter what, short term or long term.
Correct.
Uh, it just with the zoning board of approval on it, so it's correct, which it is, no one's got issue that property transfers down the road, right? I mean, is it possible to give the zoning board, is released July, you think? Must need like a month in advance to submit, I would think.
So my, my recommendation would be, though, that, you know, you can work with the building commissioner to to understand that proper relief and then we can get you uh, moving on the zoning board as as quick as possible. This way it would get you your plan in hand um earlier. And then you could, you could work with the building commissioner to try and remedy that, that relief so that you're not in violation.
Um, Jim, is there, is there any? Under this, that scenario, is there any other than the fact that they might want to sell the property faster? If the first week is the zoning board, the second week would be us again. And putting us back on the calendar and having a continuance almost, is that, you can't continue one of these. Is that correct?
Right, yeah, this isn't a hearing, so there's no continuation. It's just a twenty to one day clock from the time of stamp with clerk.
Um, Jim, I have a question also, just because I, I need some clarity on this. Um, with that scenario, if they do go to the ZBA, um, you know, hypothetically, the ZBA could even vote two different ways at that point, right? So, um, what, you know, what would happen in that case? I just, I'm not sure on that. Like, what happens if they say no?
Right, yeah, and that's, that's a valid point, and that's why we typically send the, the, we request the applicants go to zoning board first. Because at the end of the day, uh, you know, is when you submit your, your A and R or a, or a definitive subdivision or whatever it may be uh, to the registry of deeds, that is on record. Uh, and, you know, what, what is being recorded here is a reduction of a preexisting nonco, or preexisting nonconforming lot. Making it now a nonconforming lot and a zoning violation. Uh, so yeah, if the zoning board didn't grant it, it would still be exactly that. Uh, but, you know, as, as uh, you know, as the board has said, um, you know, the granting of, of this A and R, and as the applicant's attorney said, is for frontage and uh, and and adequate access. Uh, those are your two kind of check marks there. Um, so, you know, it's up to the board whether to endorse or not. Um, and I think you guys have done your job to just, you know, raise the, raise the concern to the applicant there.
What's the what you, I I'll lead towards the language of the. So how, what, what is your time frame?
I think we work this in July, be limited, one more shot. I think go to the zoning board and then come back here if that's what you prefer, right?
That would be clear. You correct me if I'm wrong. If you may plead a prostitute, correct? Jim?
Yeah, if uh, well, uh, if to Amy's point, if the zoning board agrees that this uh meets the requirements for variance relief, I mean, there's that three-pronged test that they have to identify. Um, this is why sometimes, you know, you, you get lot area requests, reduction lot area from the zoning board and not, it's not always granted. Uh, you need to meet those uh, those requirements, though they do seem to have a very strong narrative, I would say.
But realistically, Jim, the earliest they're going to get in front of the ZBA is August, first week of August.
Um, I think, I mean, if they can work pretty quick to get it done, um, what I'm thinking is the meeting is July sixth. If they can get me everything by next Thursday at the latest, then I can advertise the twenty second and the twenty ninth for you to be on the ZBA for the, the sixth. If that's, you know, that's, that's pretty much our, our window.
You want to, I, I, I just wanted to say, I, I very much appreciate what the board and Jim explained, but I just want to make sure, and to the vice chairman's point, the decision you folks are making is based on zoning.
I understand.
And that, that is not the accepted standard for approval of an A and R. Is, is this a subdivision? Um, and it's not, so. And you're right, they are, they are definitely operating at their own peril in coming forward. But it seems like they're willing to try. I, I'm just hoping that we're not looking to set a precedent with the zoning board because zoning boards really don't like to do that, so. But this is something that the town embraces for folks under these circumstances where you have these two nonconforming lots, one very, very non, doesn't even meet the five thousand square foot uh requirement under chapter forty eight. Um, you know, if, if the zoning board does not want to set any type of precedent, uh, I would just feel badly that we lost this opportunity for what these gentlemen have found.
With, Tom, can I ask you a question? I mean, we, it sounds like we need to go to the zoning board anyway, right? Or you're saying no?
Well, can I make a suggestion? This is something to think about. You want a couple minutes to talk about the hallway and we can come back? Will you open the hearing?
I'm definitely not here.
Or whatever.
So you're having attorney-client privileged conversations.
But my form, so it's up to you.
Do you want, do you want to take a, um, that we? Five minute reset?
Yeah, you could indulge us, we'd appreciate.
Yeah. I'd like to take a five minute reset.
Okay, thank you.
And obviously we paid.
Mr. Chairman, if, if you'd like, uh, you could continue on to other matters and return back.
Yeah, I would like to do that. Let's look at um the A and R for uh three fifty uh Rhythm Road.
What is it, the housing land plan? Uh, the.
It's a point of reference. We, we've known each other for years in the past.
Yes.
Chairman, why are you here to?
Uh, presenting A and R for three fifty Rhythm Road.
Yep.
Uh, the plan to, to fully meet all zoning requirements. And the possible, the rear possible A got to be a building lot that is going to be conveyed to and about.
Okay.
One of the butters on this.
Yeah, we listen gentlemanly with that. Mr. Dalby is in front of the neighbors.
The chairman?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to go.
Oh, that's good.
They're common line.
We have enough leverage, correct?
Correct.
What is the um, I apologize. Big we for rights. What is he intended to do with lot, one that might do?
Um, well, I think that we convey to our building lots.
And what type of buildings?
Presidential.
Uh, single family, do play?
Single family.
Um, question about um parcel A. Indicated here, the none.
Correct.
Is that grandfathered in as we move forward?
No, it's going to be conveyed to one of the butters. It's not a building lot on its own. So it'll be added to the neighbor in the back, I believe. We approach it here.
The floors?
Yeah, they intend to buy it from Mr. Dalby.
Okay. And then building on it?
No. They already have a house on their lot, so they can't put another, another dwelling.
Okay.
There are any?
What's, sorry.
How many, how many square? How many square feet between the two of them? See, one point six acres in parcel A.
Uh, we didn't calculate it up, but the lots on Rayville are relatively small lots, that some divisions are cool, I believe in the seventies. So I think they're both twenty thousand and maybe. So certainly brings them up to code, this are the area.
And go ahead.
Are there any existing structures on the lot?
There was a house in the front, but it was torn down recently.
Okay.
Um, I'm going to have a question. I know they have, oh, sorry, I didn't know that one's all the, all the way down there.
Actually, this one's going to be on septic, it has ton of water, yeah.
And then by and so the lot just goes. And then by and so the lot just goes around the path, isn't, in other words?
Well, the butler just wanted additional land.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we were just gonna divide this thing in two.
Jim, does this give the? If the parcel A and the other ones get joined, is there anything we gotta worry about as far as subdividing that one? Later?
Uh, well, if, if A does, uh, merge, and then they wanna subdivide, they would have to come back to this board for any further. You know, A N R or subdivision of land in the future.
Okay, thank you. I think it's fairly patterned, right? Um, unless I'm missing something, Jim, I entertain a motion to endorse.
No, I have no, I have nothing further to add, except for, nice to see you, Bill.
Yeah, you too, Jim.
Governor, motion to the floor, uh, second to endorse A N R. Uh, call for the vote?
And aside.
Bill I.
Bill I.
In electronically. I do want to, no, electronically, that way we have it.
No, 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 no. Unfortunately, the registry catch your off the pizza.
How big is the?
Should we just give us a, a month of the session documents?
He is. Oh gee. So that'd be pretty easy, so keep a copy of that and what. We have it on your server.
For paper, please. Both last year, wait till three quarters.
And then we have it forever.
It might be a while before he takes it in.
Really decide one. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I guess, every way. Never said this before, I guess I have to, I'm gonna do so. Uh, there.
Uh, thank you for the time. Yeah, the decision made, we're, we would like, uh, to take, um. Advantage of Jim and your board to get some, and, uh. Go through the zoning initially, and then come back with. Part of the, mine from the zoning board, um, ju- just ask, would this board send any type of? Information and what we're attempting to do on the applicant's behalf to the board, or?
That's a question for Jim.
Like a recommendation or?
You mean, um, guidance to the zoning board in terms of what you're seeking to, to achieve here?
Correct.
Yeah, so Amy.
We can send the minutes.
I can send them the minutes, Jim, or whatever.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and I mean, Amy, Amy and I also staff that board, so we can cer- we'll certainly be present and can discuss the matter with them as well.
It, it works with, with him, too.
So what, what we can do is provide you a copy of the minutes. Just to clarify, we not approve them, but they'll still be minutes indicating our desire. That will provide it to the zoning board. And then we will know from that. Yes, sir.
I mean, from what you've seen and the situation that we both have, I mean, would you be willing to recommend to the zoning board that? You would plan to approve it, so they know, I mean, would that give them any better confidence in this, or does that not matter?
I think, I mean, Jim will be at the, and Amy, Jim will all be at the zoning board meeting. To inform that board of the circumstances, from the purpose of what you want done, and why you're doing it, and.
And, you know, I, I think, i- is it fair to say that this process, um. Increases our comfort level, is that a fair assessment?
I think it does.
Jim, is that fair?
Yeah, May, I obviously can't speak for the board, but, uh, you know, it's, it's certainly. I think they historically also have, uh, you know, considered the intent and need. Uh, when, when, um, considering variance, specific variance requests such as this.
That's so, so I just, can I just confirm?
No, posture.
If, if the zoning board were to approve it, would you be inclined to approve it as well?
You know, how the, uh, the increase our comfortable.
Yeah.
I, I, I can't predict something.
No, no.
Don't, don't you have to sign it if, if the Z B A approves it? I think you have to, don't you, Jim?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
The Z B A approves it, don't you, doesn't the board have to sign it?
Uh, well, so, so it has adequate access and adequate frontage, uh, you know, so the board could, could sign it, um. Uh, tonight, with the understanding, uh, that you go to zoning board or the zoning board first, and then, yes. Uh, when you come back to the planning board, it has adequate access, adequate frontage, and now also isn't creating a zoning violation. I think that, that's extremely helpful, uh, in, um, getting it, getting it through exactly as it should.
Excuse me, Jim, but if it did go through the zoning board, then they could put the zoning board decision on the A N R. That it was approved by the zoning board on such and such a date.
Right, that's typically what we've seen.
That's, that's the advantage of doing it the other, going through the zoning board first, is because then you've got a clean document, you've got. You come here, and then your, your A N R has that on there that then gets acted on. Or in one way or another, so that's the advantage. I, I think we're, I'll try to agree with, it's on the same, same thing. I'm sorry, then I need, I would entertain a motion. Jim, what's the, what's the proper motion from here? Cause we, we don't want, don't, do we say no, or do we just, what do we, we don't wanna not be?
Well, right, so if the applicant, if the next step here is that the applicant is going to. Pull, pull back the plan, withdraw the plan, seek proper relief from the zoning board, and then bring back the. Plan for the board's consideration, I think the proper, uh, request from the applicant would be to withdraw at this time without prejudice. So that you could bring it back immediately following the zoning board's, uh, decision. And I know Amy's quick with it, with the, does these A N Rs, since it's not a public hearing, it could be. The, with the following week, uh, from the zoning board, is that right, Amy?
Um, as long as there's, if the decision is rendered, do they have to, they would have to wait the twenty days? Uh, but they could sign the A N R at our meeting July thirteenth, technically, Jim, right, the planning board meeting?
Right, you would have a decision at least, right, that this board would understand that.
Yeah.
That wouldn't slow the process.
No, I think that works for the applicant, that's, I'd like to get that decision with the Z B A, however they go with that, I think of that on the sixth.
Hmm.
To have that pretty much ready to go to the town clerk that next day, if not by Monday. I, you know, I'm a hundred percent willing to work with whatever you need to, to get this done, cause I do understand.
Jim, I, I have one patentable question. If they were throwing. This evening. The next discussion still happened, and it's still in the minutes, correct?
Oh, yes, yes.
I, I just didn't wanna say that it definitely happens. But I, I think if you would withdraw, go to the Z B A from that, and I think it would increase something.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I wonder if the board too, and this is totally up to you, not that it's big money, but I, you know, maybe it's just to waive the application fee. For the applicant to come back again, since he was withdrawing, just, I, I think.
Are we allowed to do that?
I, I think, I believe we're allowed to, Jim, in the past, we have, or dizzy.
Yeah, normally, uh, you'll need to just seek, uh, approval from the town administrators, all, uh, so, I, I think that could be done.
So, I will, you will.
Okay.
Make that, do we need a motion for that?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. I know it was longer than you thought, longer than we thought.
Yes.
Oh, we're just trying to streamline this process.
Very much appreciated.
Okay?
You wanna take this with?
Jim, do we need a motion, sir, accept the withdrawal?
Yes, thank you.
I entertain a motion to, to withdraw, are they made off of ten point eight, without, without residence? No, uh, okay, yeah, discussion, I believe is over. The favor, I'm gonna start going.
And aside, Brian I.
Bill I.
Bill I.
Yeah, God.
That probably that passes unanimously. So, thank you very much. Jim, what's, uh, next on the agenda today, I believe we have, Bungay Brook Inclusionary Housing.
Yep, and it, uh, Bungay Brook Inclusionary Housing, uh, condition number three, just a discussion from the, uh, developer.
Want to step forward, sir?
It is a slide, good, Steve and the castle, I believe, on building Bungay Brook. It's, I like coming to this meeting when you guys are working with, uh, your buyers, and it's all on the project, really working together, I, I applaud you for. Doing that, we all see what happened here, and then.
Oh, we're gonna take another.
How are we gonna do that, you're all smiling, I mean, everyone's.
Uh, things will be nice down there, we've been down there a couple times.
Yeah, um, we're playing, we, we have our own challenges, uh, this supply chain issue, we ordered that. Those sewer pump stations, like, the day we bought the property, I think, and, uh. We still don't have those things in yet, we, we have a lot of things on other projects, like switch gears and things that are. Well, they tell us, they, they're fifty weekly times, eighty weekly times, it's incredible, the, the things that go on in the supply chain, I guess, um. If, if they can't get certain metals, um, to make certain manufactured products, so. A lot of things that are just, no one can get in the country, it's amazing, um, and so we have a sixty unit buildings completely finished. And we cannot put power to that building, because we don't have the switch gears, it's amazing, and, and we're not alone, it's happening all over, so. Challenging times, different times, you know, who, who would, who would have a thought to go through things like this, but, and then you're about. Sewer pump stations are coming, I think, they keep pushing, you know, another month, another month, and we're probably gonna get it in. In another month, if they don't push it out another month, but anyway, yeah, it's, it's shaping up, um. But, um, I know we have some deposit, we've got, you know, I think four buildings up down there. Uh, we've got some paving in, the, uh. The, um, the lines are all the way down, the, the West Main is all the way down to the, um. I, I Street, I think, well-connected, we made an agreement with your buyers, and, uh, that those are all in, so all are off-site. Workers in, and, yeah, it's, uh, the pavement up the front, and we're gonna stop landscaping, that's, you know, we. We really pride ourselves on doing a nice landscape job, and, you know, by jumping down and, and see it. When we start, my, my father used to call it, put the lipstick in the high heels on it, that's, that was my father's phrase, and I think it's a good one, hey, man. Uh, so, uh, as far as the inclusionary housing, uh. Before I even bought the property, I did go down to the, um, Rhythm. Uh, Housing Authority down there, and, and, and I have to say, I initially went down there. Because there was a sewer pump station down there, and I knew we were gonna feed all our work down, so it's primarily work on infrastructure, but. I introduced myself to the, it was a woman there that was running it down there, and, and Pilates running that. Uh, the authority down there now, but I ended up speaking to her initially, and she told me how, you know. About the, the affordable housing in town, and, and they were trying to build some affordable housing, and they couldn't get funding, and I said, oh. That's great, that, that's perfect, that's just what I'm looking for, because if you take the public. Entity, and you take the private entity, and you work together. You can, you can do so many good things, that, things that I can't do alone, things that they can't do alone, we, and we do this in other towns. Um, we work with a lot of social agencies who are great, working with people, they're social workers, and we. We are builders, we've seen those social workers try to build houses, and they can't get it done, and, and, and we certainly cannot do their job either, that's. That's how life works, but anyway. I had the conversation, I can't remember the woman's name now, but then she replied after that, and then I felt this, so I, I, I started with the meeting. Going before the Housing Authority there, and, you know, looking at the property they had, and we went round and round a couple of different iterations. I did engineering work, I did architectural work, came up with some plans. And then it, it just didn't work, instead I tried a couple of different options, it didn't work, and then, you know, unfortunately. I only work forty hours a week now, and so I can't get much done, when I was younger, I could work. Fifty, sixty hours a week, I got a lot, I didn't, I didn't get that much done, in the decisions that's, that, um. That I have to have this inclusionary. Housing done before I can start my first unit, which kind of boxes me in a little bit, now I have a hundred. Eight units to fill, so what I'm asking you right now is to have some relief on, give me, I picked the number forty units. Figured I'd still have sixty more units, I have plenty, that would give me more time, so, let me back up again. I'm still working with the Housing Authority, you have new members down there, um, I don't have a. I don't have a direction right now, but I still feel confident, they still wanna work with me, I still wanna work with them. I still think I can put something together, and, and I think I'll put something together that would be better than. The affordable housing in the project, now I can, I, I could go on and on about why I don't think that's a good idea, but in the end. I'm obligated to provide affordable housing, and I recognize that, and I will do that, we, we always do, I will not show up in that, I'm not. Asking, you know, to be relieved of that, I'm asking for more time, is all I'm asking for. I didn't bring, I, I do have plans, and then, I didn't bring all that in, because none of that is, is approved, or, you know, it's not. When I do get something approved, I will bring it in for presentation to you, I'll show you where it's gonna go, I'll show you what's, what's gonna go. And I obviously need, I, I had a housing, uh, uh, authority approval, but I didn't have. The rest of the town's approval for, for project that I was proposing, so, and I know I need your approval, I need selectmen approval, I need housing. You know, it's a, pretty much a town. My project, although I think you, your board is the, is the one that, your board is the one I have to satisfy. So I intend to do that.
Jim. In a prior, prior life before the planning board, uh, I believe on the, uh, Housing Authority, for about twelve years. We've gone round and round with this piece of property, I'm assuming it's in Center Street?
That, that, that was one of the projects I was working on, and, and it still may be up to do something, but if not, I'll find another piece of property in town.
At my, at one point, we looked into that. And correctly from around, Jim. The state loan money to the town to purchase that property. They have the right, it's, you allow something else to be done on it. It has to be considered excess property?
Yeah, there is, there certainly is a process for, um, um, releasing, um, property that's from the Housing Authority. And I don't think that's gone through that process at this time. Um, so, yeah, it's, it's certainly, uh, not a quick process.
And then that, that was, you know, a, a long time ago. Um. Well, again, we all have in front of us section three, that we, we all agreed to when this process started. Um. Jim, I, I think the applicant need, correctly from Ron, we can do something. With occupancy as opposed to sale of property, correct?
Yeah, so the, the current, uh, condition states that no occupancy permit shall be issued until the applicant has submitted a special permit. Uh, application to this board, uh, uh. Uh application to this board uh uh and received approval of the same. Uh for the inclusionary housing, um and so it's. It's subject to availability of offsite units, so the board stated they would consider offsite units. Uh and the applicant may submit the inclusionary application for offsite units to the board. For view and approval, any affordable units provided on site shall be a similar kind of, that's your standard language there. Um so yeah, you uh it is currently uh situated as for ops or for occupancy.
Jim, can I ask a couple of questions for occupancy, so the the plan has to be in place before the for occupancy? Or the the. Some of the inclusionary housing has to be in effect.
Right, so so we set, we, the board established that the, it's simply the application and the approval of the permit. So the reason for that is that when when the application or when the hearing takes place for the inclusionary housing special permit. This board will then set the schedule, the the phasing of. Uh the affordable units, so you know, if you think back, it's been a little while, but like building up shores. Uh there was a phasing plan that was established, uh that would be something similar, I think, that this board would consider for. Uh this development, so as the condition is stated. It's simply the applicant must file the special permit. And work with this board and ultimately get render a decision for this board before. Any occupancy is granted, and I will stress that this is an important condition because. Ultimately, uh when um you know, Mr. Vanacasa uh really gets gets rolling here, which I know he has already. Uh these occupancy permits are gonna are gonna wanna be, wanna come fast and furious, and that really puts our building department in a tough tough spot. Because, you know, these are not just the developer knocking on the door, we're used to that. But now it's the the homeowners that want to get in the door, um and so, you know, I think it's important to really. Button up all the conditions that are necessary um in a timely manner.
Second question, do we, have we done escrow accounts or something like that tied into something like this? Like, for example, you know, if if we. When we phase things in, typically it would be you'd have, after so many houses, you'd have to have so many inclusionary houses. And things like that, but. If if, you know, and I want to ask the applicant what the timeframes would be, but is there a, is there a opportunity to go down that type of a path?
Uh possibly, uh you know, it's a creative uh solution, I, we haven't historically done uh escrow, uh monetary. Uh or bonding of any kind, really, because I think the. The only concern I may have right off the top would be that, you know, then that would put the onus on the town potentially. Uh to to produce these units if if they fail to produce those. Uh um but, you know, that that could be something we could consider, I guess, if. If as as opposed to building increments or occupancy permits if the board so chose.
Yes, sir. Uh so so the project's a hundred eight units and. We would estimate about twenty-five units a year, which makes it a four-year project, so we we have quite a bit of time. And. What I'm seeking to do here is in in instead of doing four sale units is what I'm thinking, is that I'm going to build. I think it's ten or eleven, I mean. Um whatever the number is, I have to include, I don't have one in front of it. I was, I was intending to build all those at once so that it's not gonna be like one every. Ten units, it's gonna be like, we're gonna go build all ten, once we get this plan in place. Build all ten and the idea is that. They're gonna be smaller units, but instead of selling the units, I think the affordable price is two hundred fifty thousand a piece. We're gonna be building these units, they're gonna be smaller, we're gonna donate that to the Housing Authority is what they're trying to do. And I think it's a, I think it's a win-win for both parties, honestly. I think it's a real good concept, the Housing Authority likes it, we like it, we we've come up with some good plans. And whether we do it on Center Street or whether I'm gonna continue to try to do something on Center Street, because that was their, that was their um. Goal, but if we can't, then I'll seek another location and if it, all else fails, I'll come back to building on site. All else fails, but I don't feel like that's the best. Opportunity for affordable housing with. Selling something two hundred fifty thousand, and and I can tell you this. Off record, there's all kinds of uses in that system there, with with, what I'm thinking now is. I build these units offsite, they're smaller units. They're more, they're easy to maintain, they're more affordable. They've actually donated them, so Housing Authority has total control of those, there'll never be any. Different things happen with those affordable housing, I can tell you, I don't, and gate restrictions and things, you know, uh. That I don't want to go into once I'm I'm a lawyer today right now.
What timeframe would you think that you would need to make those types of decisions, moves, have a plan? And it 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 sounds like you've been working on this for a little while.
I have been.
Um so we're talking a year before you come up with the.
I would think a year, again, I think I'm gonna be on this project probably four years. So so if I ask for one year extension, you know, I I said four units, I picked that number, that. That gives me a real comfort zone here for back, still have sixty-eight units on the table. You've got leverage on me and until I come to my last. Four years, ten or ten years, whatever, you got leverage, um I I'm not.
Yeah, I'm not looking for, I would.
Well, you need to keep leverage on. Being me or anyone else, and I like to think I have, I've been building forty-six years, I've never defaulted on a. On an obligation with the town, never, so I will not do it here either, I just still need to treat all developments the same, I get that.
Um I don't know if there's an opportunity to do something with escrow and do, I don't know if you guys, what you guys think.
I'm open to that also, you know, I I don't think you need it yet, but maybe you might want it down the road, if if we. If I if I get twenty units filled and I still don't have done, but I'm close. Then maybe you think, yeah, you're taking the escrow at that point, I'm just tossing ideas.
Okay, can I look at it? From a practical and and business standpoint? What is the square footage of your units?
I think they're like eighteen hundred. And don't hold, don't call over to that, I'm just laying it in there.
And there'd be, how many do you have to build?
They vary in size, they're.
Eighteen hundred in the ballpark? Okay, so we're we're going eighteen to twenty-two. And we're talking about um, how many, Jim, eight?
I think it's ten.
Okay, we're talking about ten. So I'm assuming. The intent is to build things that are similar in nature. Either onsite or offsite. If you need to do something with the Housing Authority. I don't believe those units in the Housing Authority even approach eighteen hundred square feet.
No, they don't. But I'm not selling them, I'm giving them.
I I understand that. But when we look at it, we were looking at inclusionary housing. We weren't looking at the the. Donation of housing to the town. I I view it as. I don't, I don't apologize, I'm just taking a practical business approach here. You're gonna have ten units. Smaller in size.
Yes.
There are many common walls.
Well, well, so they they will meet your S A, your S A H I, which is subsized housing inventory. So you will get the same credit from the state, whether I build it here or here. Two hundred square feet or two thousand square feet or ten thousand, you've got the same one credit per unit.
Okay.
So you're gonna end up, I think, in a better place, instead of me selling it for two hundred fifty thousand, I'm building something smaller and giving it away.
I understand. But when 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 we entered in the agreement. The thought was initially to keep it on site, lifetime quality. Now, I know you have the option to go offsite. Um but now it it's no longer lifetime quality. It's gonna be, it's gonna be most likely one bedroom units.
It could be more, it it it's it's their option, it's housing, they 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 have given me direction. But initially, we were gonna do three bedroom units, then they asked me to do over fifty-five, now we're we're talking about. Things, there's, there's a list of three thousand, this is their number. People waiting for these affordable housing, so there's a huge demand in the community, so. We're working together to provide something that there's a big need for, and and there are times when we build these affordable housings. And we sell for two fifty, and these people have to fit in this really narrow slot, your income, there's there's times when we can't even find buyers for them.
I I I unfortunately, we're aware of you know of this.
Mister Chairman, if I may, oh, I'm sorry, bro.
You can go ahead, Jim.
Uh I was just gonna offer a suggestion, um so. I, you know, Mr. Vanacasa has a lot of creative ideas, uh you know, unfortunately, that, you know, nothing has materialized just yet. You know, I would, I would recommend that the applicant, you know, come in, apply for the inclusionary housing special permit. Um you know, put them on site for the moment, establish where they would be, get your permit. And if something something like this materializes and you're able to achieve it, come back and amend that special permit. Uh and and let the board consider that, but uh you know, I I don't think anything's holding you back from. Just go ahead and get in your first option on the table, getting it approved. And uh and potentially, you know, if if the other option doesn't materialize, you already got it going. And you can, you can start identifying which unit is gonna be affordable.
Jim, what I thought was something s- similar. That the applicant self-submit an inclusionary housing special permit, runs tight units, if no offsite units are available. No occupancy shall be granted, it'll condition three is met. The applicant may wish to continue and seek option for offsite units after receiving the permit. And may return to seek amendment to the inclusionary house. Does that seem reasonable? Jim?
Oh, yes, yes, sorry, I was glad you were referring to Mr. Vanacasa, yes, that seems reasonable to me.
You know, a special permit of of offsite units aren't acquired.
So I I I'm learning about this stuff all the time, yeah, this inclusionary housing thing is something I've been working at. Maybe three years now, and I've built forty-seven years, so it's still really new to me.
Yeah.
I didn't even know you could do that, um start that process with that, because we don't do this ourselves, we have a company that does this, because it's a. Mirage of paperwork and forms and things, we fill out, we have sealed dozens more for us.
Um I think we've bumped some language when you start to go through the process. Um applying for onsite, continue to look offsite, and something offsite happens, you come back. And we try to amend it, Jim, is that what? That's what we're trying to accomplish.
So can I just say this one thing, that that I have been working on this. Since the day, since before.
I understand.
Because I have, I have spent time and money on architecturals and engineering. And 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 it's a little bit, and and it's. Just concerning, because I had really good feedback from the Housing Board, really good feedback from me, but it just. Didn't sell town wide, so I I take a step back and I go, so I have worked on this, so it's not like uh. That I just came in here a year later and said, you know, give me more time. Can I, can you, can I do that, but can you still give me some, because my, my team is looking at me saying. Why are you doing this, Steve? I I said, because I think it's a good thing, I think it provides a thing, I think it's a win-win. So can I have some units, I asked for four units, and give you some less units. So that I'm not pressed up against the wall at this point, still a lot of times, still a lot of leverage. But to have this all in place before the first unit gets done, because I'm sure with the time. Not sure what the timeframe is in this other company doing everything you said, which is, I guess, it's just a. If if I could have them just do a plan, is that what you're saying? And and she could do this in a week, I, it's no problem, but but if I have to go through all the state approvals and all that, that takes months and months and months.
It 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 could take years.
Yeah.
And we 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 don't have years, unfortunately. Yes.
Question, what are, what are you asking for exactly? I heard forty units, you're looking for forty, what, building? Forty occupants.
Give me this length of time here to get all this work done, to work with the Housing Authority. To even, if it's not the land on Center Street, then it's not possible, that I get the. Or we get to produce some housing, offsite housing.
So, okay, I get that.
Three thousand, these people that that look, these three thousand people, they're a variety of people that are in in much higher need. Than the people that are gonna move into my two hundred fifty thousand dollar affordable housing.
No, I, and I, I get that, now, if. Best case scenario, which I know that this is kind of a loaded question, because obviously material shortages and such, but. When would you anticipate best case scenario that you would actually be getting an occupancy permit, because?
For Bungay?
Yeah. Is what, there's a few buildings that are under construction?
Actually, soon as the pump station, soon as the sewer system is operational, the water system is all operational. If the gas system is operational, soon as the sewer system is operational, I can be ready for that. So that could be sixty days. Could be, but I don't control the whole process, I don't, you can't say that that I will have it done.
Wait, I think that what Jim and Bill have come up with, putting an amendment in there for you to have that option. I think that's fair for everybody, if if you don't think that, I just think it covers everybody that if. You know, he's still committed. Exactly, like, but it gives you some leverage too to explore the other option, if need be.
And, yeah, I, I agree.
It's options.
And I do like your approach. I can tell you, being in the industry, Harry House, like you said, it's just.
So you know a little bit of the background.
Yeah, no, I, and I think. I I I appreciate you going to the Housing Authority and seeing what is really in this town, because I do. Like an out of the box approach, you know, um.
I think it's a great thing to do, really.
I, no, I, I I do, um the only thing that, you know, I'm, I'd be a little concerned with is, you know. The the timeframe to get the the offsite housing, because I don't even know really what. What we would need, or the Housing Authority would need to kind of sign off, I mean, are we gonna need? Engineered construction plans of this thing to say, yeah, this is what we're gonna do, or?
No, we we I'd take care of all that, that's my, that's on me.
But from a timeframe perspective, I mean, it it's. If you're going back to square one, I know you've gone through a few different options here, um and it sounds like. Some might pan out, some might not, it's gonna take a significant amount of time to kind of get to that.
Well, I've been through um. Number of different versions on my architectural plans and. I think what I've got right now, the Housing Authority likes, so I think I've got that in place, so it's it's a matter of. Um finding a piece of land, uh if not Center Street, or maybe it's Center Street, but with a different use and and. Um there's, there are different groups that I can find a group that would be acceptable for them, but.
Got you. I just don't want to handcuff you or handcuff us.
And I like, I like what Phil suggested, put some escrow and even, you know, what Tim's comfortable with. If there's things, because I think that's what it comes down to too.
Yeah, I just said, you got one thing. And I apologize. For getting um political. In essence, you're dealing with the state, correct? And the Housing Authority. And that is partially owned by the Housing Authority and the state, they provided the seed money, I believe, so they can purchase.
I I don't, I don't, I don't think I need the state to build one, uh when you say the state, I'm talking about to get the. Housing units registered for the state, that's that's, that's all I think.
No, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about the property.
The right to, the right to build on it? Think that's an issue?
Well, Jim and I, I think it may be.
You guys think of this?
Yes.
You might be right.
They now have a two point one billion dollar shortfall. As of last week, because of the economy. Now, they're gonna be very tight with.
If the state put a restriction on the land, as far as I know, there's gonna be a restriction on that land.
I believe for the. I believe for the, what we can find out. But I, when I was on the Housing Authority, we went through this vaccination process several times.
We can write a title. I can write a title on that property.
Um, and ended up being, it had to be considered surplus property from the state, and Jim agreed a few months ago.
I could get a title on that, and if that's the case, then I'll just abandon that altogether and move on to something else.
What I'd like to recommend is, um, I can, Jim, and back in some potential language.
Here's Jim.
Welcome back.
I, I figured you guys solved all the world's mysteries. Sorry.
Jim, you wanna add?
Sure, sure. So I think the boards explained to, um, author the decision.
Oh, we're not quite there yet.
Okay, all right. But, um, whether or not the applicant can acquire a piece of land to, um, to develop the offsite inclusionary or not, maybe, maybe you could condition it to so many units, uh, until he can, uh, you know, secure a, a piece of property, or maybe so many units and designate in his project where these inclusionary could go in case there was not, you know, an alternative site. You know, maybe he could identify on the plan where the inclusionary would go, the number of them, and, 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 um.
Jim, you've spoken about some language. Do you still, do you have that?
Yeah, uh, so yeah, there's certainly opportunities. I, you know, I agree with what, uh, with what Tim's saying. But I, I think we can do that and meet the, the condition three of the special permit at the same time. Uh, you know, uh, you could certainly, um, identify in the special permit, the now we're talking about the inclusionary housing special permit, if it's applied, you could certainly state that, you know, within the first thirty occupancies, uh, you know, four will be established, and those will be, at this time, identified on-site and identified those units. And if, you know, before the thirty, before that occurs, if Mister Venacasa has, uh, has achieved the offsite uh, plan, he can come in and, and request a modification. Um, I, you know, right now, it's just a discussion. Uh, so, uh, you know, the board is, is here to offer Mister Venacasa, um, his options. Um, so nothing can be modified tonight in the
No, I don't think it can be modified.
But I still, I still believe that Mister Venacasa should come in and apply for a special permit for condition three. And, you know, if, if we need to, uh, modify it later, um, to achieve what may be a, a very, very good noble project, then, uh, you know, the board can certainly consider that at that time.
And we can work on some language and put them on the agenda. Uh, how busy is our agenda around the last meeting in, um? June?
June twenty-second is very busy.
Well, so the, though the applicant will need to apply for a special permit, and will have to notice it, do a public hearing on it and, and all that.
So that's gonna, that's gonna take some time. I would say, Jim, what do you think? Maybe August? We only have July thirteenth, so.
Yeah, very, very likely. And that's, that's why I still, I stress again that, you know, uh, the timing is important, because you know, just applying for the special permit already, we're talking about August, and I know Mister Venacasa is saying four years, but that's I've seen his work. He, he does quality work, and, uh, and I know the housing market is tight, so I, I would, I would imagine, uh, you know, once these start getting online, they're gonna go quick.
Interest rates are six percent now, Jimmy, so we put it there for the thanks.
But we also, let me interject for a moment. We have another property in town that's selling like hotcakes, correct? Um, you know, beyond what people imagine, you know, when the first shovel went into work. Um, have, have you, um, looked at rehabbing abandoned property at all in town?
I did go and see the tax collector on that idea, and she didn't have any suggestions for me. So if anyone else has any suggestions for me, I'm happy to look at that, because I think that's an excellent choice also. Um, I could do something. We, we, we do build a variety of different houses, um. You know, I, I build everything residential. I, I, I build apartments, I build condominiums, I build group homes, I build single-family houses, so I'm open to any of those. Give me, you know, sink, toilet, the bathroom, the kitchen, they're all the same. It's just more, more bigger walls for the smaller walls, it's all the same. So I'm open to any of those suggestions. If anyone has any ideas about abandoned properties that are available, that might be useful, because we do homes for, for people with a variety of handicap issues too, which is, which also qualifies under S H I also, handicap housing.
Jim, who would have a list of abandoned properties in town here?
I, I have a list.
Mister Icardi has it.
And it's substantial, right?
Um, it's, it's gone down, but now it's starting to up again. They're starting to up again with that, you know.
So I, I think, you know, we, we can have a multi-pronged approach.
I like that idea.
And you try to work, you know, with the town on, you know, quote-unquote abandoned property. It may involve working with banks and they own some abandoned property and taking that approach.
I, I've worked in that area also, with, with abandonants, boat closures, with tax ring properties. I, I, I've got experience doing all that.
So I, I think we, we can, um, generate some language and, um, look at other options and come back in August.
That works. Does that work, Jim? It's really up to Mister Venacasa to get that application in, though. That's, that's the, it has to
I just have to bring the application in, and then, and then if, if I had a closing in August or September, it's a fight. I didn't, it wasn't public hearing, I have an application. In this, before this board?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
It'll be different from what I've had before, then. So I'm not familiar with the process.
Okay, that, that's fair. Yes, sir.
Just a question, I'm sorry. Um, so when are you projected to have your first closing, you know?
Um, I think probably like the beginning of September.
I would just need some direction from the board, because of the conditions that it does have.
So if I come in with a, with an application in, in August, and that satisfies that requirement, and then I can get building launched, if I can get occupancy permits in September, how that, who's asking everybody, anybody who wants that?
You'll, you'll need, you'll need to seek approvals from this board before occupancies. So if everything is, if you have a full application that is um, is satisfactory to the planning board, then yeah, absolutely. Uh, you know, we could, we could very well achieve, uh, condition three by, by September.
Okay, great.
But again, you have to be honest with us. And you're trying to work through as much as we can.
And we can help Mister Venacasa with the, we can help him with that, getting it achieved for the August meeting. If, you know, because we'll have to notify, Jim, we have to notify, but then do everything that we typically have to do, correct?
Right, it's a special permit.
Yep, yep.
So Jim, technically, um, what's the best way to do a motion?
There are no, no motions tonight. This is
That's why I was getting confused.
I think, you know, he knows, like you have direction now to research those other options you were saying, and then by the August meeting, Jim, we should have probably some answers if those other options have been explored.
Sounds like a good plan.
So I'm going to, I'm going to get that application ready. What, what do I have to do to get on your agenda, besides proof application? That's it? Just get this application together?
Give me a call tomorrow. I can let you know just the process and the application and all that. I, we can get that all figured out. And then as far as your alternative plan, possibly, they can look at that in August if you have that ready too. But I think what Jim had said too is make sure that within that initial plan, designate those areas within the existing plan that you permitted, and then, you know, possibly sign an alternative.
Get this in place, and we can always go the other direction.
I'm trying to give you some
I appreciate that.
Other than the Housing Authority, abandoned property, bank-owned property.
Yep, yep, yep.
Yeah, and, and they make you work outside the forty hours a week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jimmy.
Come on out. Sorry for keeping you waiting.
It's okay. It keeps me free, they will.
Drink some extra coffee.
I know, we should have, we should have rotated. I apologize for that. I was thinking of that earlier on. I apologize.
It's okay, buddy.
I know, but still.
Only a fellow twins.
This is a good bill of events.
Excuse me, ma'am, we've recalled a lot of things. We've never recalled a good bill of events.
This is the first, then.
So I understand you're looking for an extension.
Yes, my name's Nadine Bailey. I'm with Mackey and Mackey. I represent GW Direct, uh, fifty-one B B LLC. Um, they want to put an addition on an existing industrial building located on uh, fifty-three Maple Street. They were before this board last year, and they were granted four different permits. And due to unforeseen construction delays and, uh, um, issues getting finance, financial approval, financing approval from investors, they seek the extension of the four permits that they were granted by the board, uh, last year. And just for the record, I'll can put them on what those permits are. Um, first was a scenic road permit modification. The second one was a major business complex special permit modification. Third one was a flexible parking special permit modification. And the fourth one was a development plan approval and stormwater management permit modification. Um, the expiration dates for all four of those come into August fourth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, GW Direct is seeking a twelve-month extension, which would bring the new expiration date to August fourth, twenty twenty-four.
You wanted an extension not from twelve months from today, but twelve months while it's bought, correct?
Correct, okay, yes.
Mister Chairman, um, full disclosure, um, our board varies, closes a lot. Mackey and Mackey represented my family ten years ago.
Oh.
There's a filing in the office, in clerk's office already.
For a conflict?
Well, this is disclosure, not a conflict. I originally voted on this originally, and I do not plan on making it myself, but under full disclosure, I'm just gonna make sure that's on the record.
Thank you. Anything else you need to add? Who do you think wanna add?
No, I, that's fine, I need. You, uh, you anticipate when?
The fall, hopefully? Okay.
The fall goes to
The fall, yeah, exactly. Yeah, it is.
Yeah, Jim, if you have any thoughts that I can do?
No, no, no thoughts or concerns. I think one year is inappropriate to extension timeframe.
This is the finance that at this point?
Uh, yes. Yep, yep. They're ready to, they've, they've got a couple more things to do, but everything, the, the prospect looks good.
So that was the gating reason why?
Yes, it was.
On the front of us, according to this.
A couple of things that, yeah, um, they have to finish, but financing's been proved and ready to go.
There are any
I'm, I'm not aware of, I, I'm, I don't think there's a definitive tenant, but I'm sure, I think they have a couple prospects.
Also, the current tenant may not be there?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right.
I'm sorry. You know who that respect it has maybe?
No, I don't.
Sorry. I have nothing.
Jim?
Nope, nothing further.
I would entertain a motion for an extension of one year, August fourth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, the four four mention permits, um, in this standout man, impressive handle.
Um, thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor, please, I'm just saying aye. With a special permit, so you can vote, right?
Not for all voting.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Hey, I was insulted for a while.
Phil, aye.
Phil, aye.
Okay, can I, you know?
Phil, the aye, aye.
You can vote? Thank you. Most of the passengers.
So Jim, do you want me to just draft a quick memo and then just get that timestamp with the town clerk and then supply that?
Exactly right.
Okay. All right, well, so you'll have that by tomorrow, if not Monday.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Very impressive presentation.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
I know, I apologize. Oh, that's okay.
Bill of all.
I'm off, I'm good.
I think just a minute.
Did we entertain, did we feel a minute?
No.
Go ahead.
Procedurally, um, my question.
Withdrawal.
Go ahead.
Oh.
Okay, we'll talk later.
For the minutes, I think it says for the roll call vote for the first public hearing, I know I lose the presentation. And, I mean, I don't even think I can vote, so. I didn't vote, and I don't think I can vote.
Because you get the
And I don't matter. That's
We can get that fixed. He's not listening, we can, that's not an issue.
And I believe the second item as well, that one with the vote to continue, which I don't vote. I can vote on that, so.
Gotcha, there, that's easy to fix.
Because, once again, I don't matter.
Anyone else? I would make a motion to accept amendments as amended. Okay, entertain a motion. Need a second?
Second, fine. Yeah.
All, all in favor? You're, you're part of the minutes.
Can I vote on the minute? Aye. Rob Lucier, aye.
Phil, aye.
Phil, aye.
Nick, aye.
Most of the passengers. Uh, have a motion to adjourn? All in favor of adjournment?
Can you say one more thing, one minute? Great job at town meeting, just with the hurt for that.
Yes.
Yes.
Wanted to say that, that was pretty exciting, so.
Well, that's true, you wanted to.
No, no, I was away, but just wanted to say, great job.
Thanks for all the hard work.
Yes.
But anyway, now it's time to adjourn.
So we can second it? Oh, good.
All in favor, please, you know?
Aye.
Jim, thanks.
Good night.